Let me give you the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need Roger for that. Always started it. Um, okay, roll call.
Ginger Shank?
Here.
Ian Swires?
Here.
Sarah James?
Here.
Frankie Schwartz?
Here.
Jeffrey Snyder?
Here.
Rich Barton?
Here.
Carolyn Sprags?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to amend or adopt the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Are you amending or adopting?
Adopting.
Adopt, there's been a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Agenda is adopted. Um, next on the list is the board norms and I'm just calling your attention to those briefly. They help us keep our meetings in order. And then we will go to recognitions.
All right, so our first one is from Rebecca Boone Elementary School and I'll have Mr. Weeks do our introduction here.
And I'm heading that way because I'm slow.
All right. All right, we're going to recognize an amazing young man tonight. Uh, we always recognize every year our fifth grade students, one who scores the highest in English Language Arts and one who scores the highest in math. This is based on the spring score, so from fourth grade. And for the first time that I can remember Rebecca Boone, we have one student who scored the highest on the English Language Arts test and the highest on the math test this year. And that is Kayden Estes.
Wait, no, Kayden.
Can he run the meeting for us too?
He can.
Turn around. Okay. There you go, yep. Oh.
I just figured I could steal somebody's.
Also, we do name, uh, our parts of the building, uh, we named the office and we named the Library Media Center. So Kayden, I pulled this down off the wall by the office. Uh, Kayden has the, uh, welcome to the Kayden Estes office. That will hang. And he also has the Kayden Estes library right there. All right, well, uh, I'll just go ahead and listen. Okay, so yeah, we have a wonderful night tonight, um, you know, lots of recognitions and really we've recognized people at the highest level at, at the state level is really what gets into the board recognition level. So to have so many people tonight, it's really wonderful. So congratulations, everybody here. Uh, so now it moves on to, uh, our state solo and ensemble festivals. I don't know, Mrs. Freeman, do you want to say something or do we just?
Oh my gosh. Can I just start from here?
That's fine.
Um, we take, um, students to district solo and ensemble at the beginning of March. Um, and those students that receive, um, a gold medal at the district solo and ensemble will then go on to state. This year for Van Inquire, we took seventeen things on to state this year, which is huge for us. Um, and we're celebrating tonight our two gold medals. A gold medal at state indicates the highest rating that you can get from Misha music activities, um, in the state of Missouri. So it's the upper echelon of, of student performers in the state of Missouri and we have two of them tonight, so.
That's awesome. Owen's not, not here tonight, but we do have Sidney Roman with us. So, come on up Sidney.
So I understand what this is about.
Congratulations.
Oh, I will. You take that to Owen.
Yes, I will too. Thank you. Owen's more associated with one, so.
And our next, uh, award is, uh, recognition is for Kelsey Miller. Kelsey has been selected as the FFA State, State Vice President, which is a huge honor and couldn't be more proud. So congratulations, uh, Kelsey. Okay, we also had a couple of our, uh, teachers win state level awards, which is no small achievement either. So we're very, very proud of Shelby Graves and Ashley Garrett. They were named, uh, from the Missouri Association of School Librarians. They won the Teacher slash Library Collaboration Award at the conference in April. So congratulations both of you.
And now you can have an extra thing to add to that.
Your parents here?
Mr. Freezer here.
Well, congratulations. So those that came for recognitions, thank you for coming. Uh, you're welcome to state for the whole meeting if you'd like, uh, or you feel free to head on out. You're, you're home.
That was so exciting. I'm going to be more proud.
That's fine. That's, that's my favorite part of the meeting. Um, Lucy, do we have any public comments? So we are ready for superintendent reports.
Yep, and our first one is Mr. Weeks, welcome back.
Thanks for staying.
Oh, thank you. We're going to start with just a few celebrations. Got to hear a couple there. All right, our first one here, uh, want to say thank you to the community. Uh, Rebecca Boone, we found out this year we were nominated for, for the second year in a row for the Warren County Reader's Choice in the best school category. So we were surprised and thank you to the community. The teachers appreciated that, so just want to pass along my thanks. Also want to celebrate our Teacher of the Year, Melissa Stewart. Wonderful first grade teacher, also on the PTO. Uh, she goes above and beyond for kids every day, so just wanted to say great job to her and thank you to all of our staff. Cheryl Longacre, our Support Staff Person of the Year. She's in our Opportunity Room, does an amazing job. Uh, so thank you to Cheryl. Thank you to all of our paraprofessionals, they do an amazing job at Rebecca Boone. Also additional celebrations, Dr. King, uh, our new Assistant Principal. She's done an amazing job. Anytime you have a new Assistant Principal, she came in and has been smooth. I, I'm telling you, she's done a wonderful job, so just want to give her kudos. Also to our wonderful students and, and, and staff. And then our community involvement, if you look in the right hand corner, um, these ladies that earned this award tonight, uh, for doing the news. This is, uh, we've invited, uh, tons of community members in this year. I think the board even got a chance to say the pledge of allegiance. Uh, we've had a ton of community support, so thank you for that. It's, it's been a wonderful year. Uh, our goal, seventy-five percent of students on reading level or making a year's worth of growth. We're almost there where it's about seventy percent, so we're slowly closing the gap. That number has come up about five to ten percent since last year, so we're chipping away at it. Uh, developing student stories, our trauma inform goal, we continue to do this. It's important every year. That's why, uh, when we have less turnover in our buildings, we know our students' stories and we can pass that along. Uh, we continue to do that, that goal was met. And then, uh, this year we added a goal of a thousand positive office referrals. Uh, if you by chance check out our Facebook page, you'll see eight to ten to fifteen positive referrals every day on there. Our teachers have been amazing. Dr. King and our office staff have done a great job helping us process that. Um, when we set that goal, we were like, we think we can get all these put up every day and recognize these kids, but we were like, it's a big thing to do. So they have worked together and we've gotten them up there. And we're actually, this is from last month when we tabulated it, uh, we're probably more about fifteen hundred already this year that we have, uh, positive office referrals the kids come through. We celebrate with every kiddo and, you know, that's important. So that goal is met. Uh, next year, uh, we want to continue with our goal and this does match the C SIP goal that was written last year, so that's important. That's why that's in there. Uh, we'll stick with that. And then we do want to add the ninety-ninety attendance goal back in there since M SIP six. That, they pulled that attendance back in there, so we want to put that in there. And then, uh, positive office referrals, at least fifteen hundred. We might even adjust that based on where we end this year. But that are some goals that, uh, we want to look at for next year. That's all I have, any questions?
Well, I wanted to let you know that on the last work session, we talked about our board goals and your attendance wasn't really aligned with some of our concerns and hopes for our district. So I want you to echo that, that that is a, a thing that we would love to see at Rebecca Boone and our entire district.
One hundred percent. Thank you.
I just wanted to say to you as well that I get lots of compliments from my grandma friends, uh, in the community about what's going on at Rebecca Boone. I mean, and when you hear from that, uh, age group that their grandkids are, uh, really feeling good there and what's going on. So I really appreciate that and you, and, uh, I just wanted to echo that to you that, uh, there's a lot of positives going on. And even when I'm in the building myself, when I came to read and most of it, just, just the positivity that goes on or you can tell that they're doing a great job though, so, and great leadership, thank you.
And it's been nice to be able to have the doors open and sure have the community come in. That's been wonderful, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks. Um, so now we have our before and after school and Care Day update from Dr. Stannick. And we have one of our retired teachers up on the stage coming back to help us volunteer, it's Hambach, so.
Yeah.
Dr. Stannick.
Yes, so I'll go ahead and give you a little bit of background on the, the picture. So Mrs. Hambach, who is a retired teacher, comes in to Care Day usually three times a month and, um, does nutrition lessons with us. So this was one of our kiddos getting to ride the smoothie bike and they look forward to that all year, so. Talk about that a little later. Okay, so our goal is, um, our C SIP goal is parent and community engagement. So the district will increase partnerships between businesses in the community and students by May of two thousand twenty-five. First of all, we're going to talk about latch key. So our latch key program provide, uh, provides before and after school care for the district students kindergarten through eighth grade. Um, we open at five thirty in the morning till seven forty and then again from three fifteen till six P M. We have stick, six staff members, um, on site. We are at each elementary building, Rebecca Boone, Daniel Boone, and Warrior Ridge. And for our middle school students, if they need latch key, they walk down to Daniel Boone after, after school. And in the afternoon, we do a broad array of activities, STEM-based activities, outdoor play, academic homework help, hands-on crafts, games, problem solving, social skills, all those kind of things. One, this is Daniel Boone. Um, we just received a grant from FCS Financial with our Daniel Boone After School four H Club. So this is a pilot program we started at Daniel Boone. We're working with four H to, um, offer a spin club. So we meet twice a month, uh, Marine from the Extension Center four H comes in and she suggested that we apply for this grant. So we did actually receive it. So it's, we, it's kind of a little wide open. We get to work towards a community service project of our choice. So the kids were looking to adding gardens and those kind of things at the schools. But this is a picture of our Daniel Boone After School, um, our four H club. At latch key, we have an enrollment this year of about a hundred and sixty-five students. Very similar to where we were last year, last year was a hundred and sixty-seven. In the A M, we offer, we only have one staff member on site at E in the mornings. Um, we are licensed, so we have to keep a ratio of one to sixteen, um, to meet licensing requirements. So in the morning, we're usually under that sixteen mark, so we only have one staff member on site. Daniel Boone is our largest in the morning this year, um, average of ten this morning. For the past few weeks, she's had twelve, um, on a regular basis. And a lot of those are middle school students in the mornings. And then our afternoons, we have two staff members. One staff member works from one thirty to six and then our second staff member comes in from two thirty to five thirty, just to kind of hit those peak hours. Usually by five thirty, our ratios are down, so, um, they can head out. If our numbers are still high, they would stay, but eventually doesn't happen.
What time does the, I'm sorry, what time does the before school latch key start?
Opens at five thirty in the morning.
Okay, maybe you said that, I missed it, sorry.
We have some parents that work for G M and I know they have to be on the line by six. So they, that usually, that really helps.
Sure.
Get them. And I attended the National, um, After School Conference in Orlando in March. And when everybody asked and we tell them about the program, I said, what time do you open? I open at five thirty. All their mouths dropped, they're like, that is so early. So we are definitely one of the earliest programs, but we wanted to make sure that we are doing what, what our community needs. Financial overview, we have a working budget of a hundred and five thousand. Our revenue so far is a hundred and five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars with a total revenue of six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Our expenses, working budget is a little over a hundred and eight thousand. We, year-to-date expenses of ninety-nine, nine fifty and we had a surplus in expenses of eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. And then moving on to Care Day, um, we started Care Day, the program was developed in the nineteen-twenty school year, um, when we moved to the four-day school week. So it's here to support the needs of our working parents and the community as well as provide safe and supportive environment and then make sure we're encouraging social, emotional, physical, and intellectual growth for our students. That is a picture from our, uh, at the Aquatic Center of Safety Around Water, less than we did. Care Days are available each Monday except for professional development days. Um, they're located at Rebecca Boone and our Care Day runs normal school day hours, so seven forty to three fifteen. Care Day is free of charge. Uh, latch key is available for a fee if the parents would like that. But we run a sliding scale where they, if they can attend four or five days, it's the same price. We have four staff members on, um, on duty at Care Day. We have a hundred and thirty-three students enrolled and then breakfast and lunch is served as well. Care Day has been funded for the past three years by the School Age Community Grant. We received ninety-nine thousand dollars over three years, so thirty-three thousand a year. And that was to implement STEM programming during Care Day. Um, it also paid for staffing supplies, professional development. And then, like I said, it allowed for the program to be free. So the grant does end this year and actually I just got an email that stated they just reopened the grant cycle. So I will be applying for that again and that is due in June. So fingers crossed. So also look for some other funding opportunities through Care Day. This, we, through the, um, we received a micro grant through the Missouri After School Network. Um, the micro grant was two thousand dollars, kind of based for entrepreneurial skills. So what we did is we wanted to start a warrior store. The, the students were really excited about starting a business. So we purchased three silhouette, kind of like cricket machines and three heat presses. Um, and then to the right, that was just an example of something the kids, they came up with the whole design. They decided at Christmas time, they wanted to sell something, they wanted to make gifts. So we sold those pot holders with the cookie mix and the spoon to staff members. Um, the students made over eighty of them, we sold over eighty of them. And then any of the profits we made, we put back in and then purchased more vinyl and other activities. So that was, that was all them, they were super excited. Another grant that we received was the Quiver River Electric Bright Futures Grant. We received one thousand seventy-eight dollars to purchase cublets, which are tiny little robots. And they have to fit together a certain way and they'll turn and spin and do all kinds of different things. Um, so we, we applied for this to start a robotics type of program through Care Day. We also received the Missouri Apartment Conservation Bus Grant. The grant covered a reimbursement of bus transportation costs as long as the students visited a state park. So we visited Quiver River, worked with the naturalist there and she had great lessons for the students. Um, we talked, talked about photosynthesis, erosion, and of course, they had to get the snakes out, that was a kid's choice. Just the financial overview, just like what I talked about before, um, we received around thirty-three thousand dollars each year. The very first year, we received an additional twenty-seven thousand, just because there was other grantee recipients that didn't use all of their funds. So the state put it out, we applied and we got an additional twenty-seven thousand. Last year, there unfortunately was no extra funding. And this year, hopefully, they usually ask about July, so hopefully they'll put that back out there and if it is, we will apply to cover reimbursement for, um, just any other, any other items. And the biggest focus at Care Day is community partnerships. Um, that was also big with the School Age Community Grant, um, that you had to have community partners. So we are so lucky to have the partners we have and always looking for more. But the University of Missouri Extension Center is a great, um, partner for us. Joe Lynn Hambach, Marine, um, has been amazing. They do four H health, nutrition lessons, gardening lessons. They come in on a weekly basis. The Warranton Aquatic Center does safety around water lessons, it's about six to eight week. And then the last session, the kids, we got to go to the pool and they got to try out their skills that they learned. Senior Regional Library comes in for storytime visits. Saint Louis Dairy Council does the adopted, um, cow program and the grass to glass dairy program. Girl Scouts come in and does STEM programming. And then of course, our local hairstylist, um, came in and gave haircuts to our students, which was great. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Uh, everybody knows how proud I am of our school district, but this, I was so disappointed by the ABC News reporter King. And, uh, cause I just thought that they were going to actually talk about one of the reasons why our four days work week is so successful. And I, I truly believe that our four day work week is successful because of the program that you run on Monday. And I cannot trumpet that enough that that is one of the most proud things that I am of, of our school district is what you do on those Care Days. I look forward every week to seeing your pictures on Facebook and what's going on down there. Just, we, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all you do for our school district and we appreciate that.
Thank you so much. I thoroughly enjoy it. And I, I love talking to the students because I get a lot of the ideas from them.
Sure. You can tell, great leadership.
I had someone from a different school district, I think that doesn't do four-day weeks, um, ask me recently about, you know, well, isn't that a problem on Mondays, the parents, what do the parents do with their kids and stuff? And so I tried to explain to them what our Care Day program is like and I don't think they believed me. And I did a poor job of describing, but I was talking about the STEM activities and everything and the person's jaw just went farther and farther down while I was talking. And they said, and how much do you charge for this? And I told them and they were shocked, so, but that's thanks to you. I, I mean, you should get some credit for that than other staff who've been involved, so, thank you.
We have amazing staff that is always willing to, whatever goofy the ideas are that are put into it.
And all, all the community too.
Yes.
All the partnerships you form, that's been a big deal too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Homeless migrant?
Yep, uh, Dr. Ross, uh.
Dr. Ross.
Tough act to follow him.
All right, good evening, board, just here to, uh, give you an update on the progress of our homeless migrant foster and English language learner, uh, programs within the district. Following up from last year, um, last year's goals, the goals, it was a different C SIP cycle and those goals really focused on access, um, both access to mental health resources and also to transportation. So some steps that were taken, um, in this previous year to address those. A third emotional support counselor was added to the district, so we have three now and they work a lot with these populations and they do a wonderful job. And then also we received, uh, the American Rescue, Rescue Plan, homeless children and youth grant. Uh, this was about thirty-seven thousand dollars, um, and they use it primarily for immediate needs, but that opens up other resources to aid in transportation, so that's been able to help with that greatly. The, uh, the continued need for mental health resources is something that I'll bring up again in the end. Um, the number of formal risk assessments, uh, as you can see over the last three years, has grown steadily. Um, so a formal risk assessment, this is when we have concerns that students may have suicidal ideations or even homicidal ideations. Um, our emotional support counselors, our SROs, admin work together to conduct a formal risk assessment and decide, you know, if we need to advance that to the next level or, or not, or contact parents, whatever needs to happen. So we can see that that need continues to grow. This is district-wide, this isn't just for these populations, um, but obviously keeping as much resources to address this growing concern is going to be something that's important. So the new C SIP cycle, uh, we're focusing on different things with the goals. So specifically, uh, goal two, uh, Warren County Area Three School District will increase A-plus eligibility rate by three percent over the C SIP cycle. And then goal three, seventy-five percent of all students in grades K through eight will be on reading level or above, uh, reading level, or have achieved one year's worth of reading growth per year during the C SIP cycle. So we're in this first year, so this is sort of our benchmark year, our baseline year, excuse me, not benchmark. And, uh, so these numbers are going to be what we look to improve moving on from here. So just to, before we get into the goal progress, just to go into growth, um, you can kind of see where our populations are right now and what obviously probably will jump out to you is that our homeless population has dropped precipitously, uh, this year in comparison to the last two. Our emotional support counselors have been working closely with, uh, our families on our homeless list, uh, making sure that one, uh, everyone still meets the criteria, two, that they still live in our district, um, three, that, you know, they're still enrolled, things like that. So we've seen a lot of families move off the list, uh, for that reason and because they've become more stable. And, or, um, you know, where maybe a situation was, um, due to necessity before is now of a choice, that sort of thing. So there's some positive outcomes there as well. Um, and a lot of transients, uh, also students have graduated, moved to other districts, things of that nature. Um, but one thing we did notice when I talked to the emotional support counselors was, uh, there is a lower incidence of referrals this year. It's something that they've noticed. So there is some concern that, you know, we need to do more outreach to try to make sure that we're finding all of these families that, that need this assistance. So with that in mind, um, I'll start with the high school because it's a little bit more, um, I, I guess it's not as a, a direct comparison to the regular, or the district student body population. But C SIP goal three, which, uh, looks to increase A-plus eligibility, so there are twenty-nine high school students that fit within these three categories. They say these three because we don't have any students categorized as migrant right now. But of this population, only two would be eligible to qualify for the A-plus program. Uh, there's a lot of different requirements for that, attendance, GPA, um, algebra one proficiency. Um, so a lot of different ways, um, to not qualify, but only two of them do. Uh, what stood out to me more, uh, when I looked at each one of these students was only one turned in an A-plus agreement. And so it's, what that says to me is we need to do better, again, more outreach to make sure that everyone is aware of these programs. You know, but, yeah, that's really all I had to say about that, make sure there's more awareness. Looking at, uh, pace to graduate, and this is pace to graduate in four years. Those tiers, I know we don't have them defined. Tier one is any student that if they pass the rest of their classes will graduate ahead of a four-year schedule. Tier two is they're going to graduate on time. Tier three is they're on pace to, to be more than a four-year graduation or take longer than a four-year. So you can kind of see the breakdown there. In these populations, they're on pace to graduate, percentage sixty-two percent. That's, um, it's obviously lower than our district graduation rate. So that's going to be something that we focus on as well and for, even though that's not directly tied into that goal. Cause we want to see these students be successful. For the reading level, so, uh, for this chart that you're looking at here, I focused just students that tested in the assessments on grade level. I didn't, these percentages don't include students that, uh, have advanced at least one reading level. Um, so this is just those students that are on reading level. And you can kind of see the percentages there. Couple of things to note, um, the K-five assessment, uh, is the D R A, the developmental reading assessment. And then six through eight uses something different, they utilize AIMS Web and that is an aggregate of a number of different assessments and I have them listed there, I won't read them all out. But, uh, that, the fact that there's two assessments leads to, uh, you know, some questions with the data. Uh, for example, uh, if you notice, like our ELL learners, um, just to mention a couple of things that jump out at me with this data. You know, our K through five students, uh, they're, they're behind our district percentage in terms of students that are on grade level reading proficiency. Uh, but then in the middle school, uh, they're right at the district level. So I, I think that probably has more to do with the assessments that are being taken, um, but it's, it's impossible to tell. Next year, we are going to the same assessment like we were talking about before, K through eight. So I think that'll help a lot with that. Uh, one thing that is really encouraging to me is our homeless population, K through five is, is ahead of our K, our, our district level, K-five percentage. And, um, I don't know that it's a coincidence, but, uh, the K-fives, like our emotional support counselors that began to work with this population, we started, we hired our first set of them five years ago. And so that would have been all through these kiddos, K through five years. So the, the optimistic part of me would like to think that, you know, this, this additional support is helping. Um, again, it's hard to know, but, um, you know, that's encouraging that that population is doing well. Pending your questions, that's all I have.
The homeless numbers bother me too, partly, mostly, I guess, because of my involvement with Agape, we're seeing more numbers.
Right.
So, I wonder if we've got some that just aren't identified or something like that.
And that's definitely a piece of it. There's no question.
Right. I wish there was some way we could share some information with the school district, but I don't know for sure if we can, but we can, we can talk about that later because maybe, maybe we could figure something out to help find some of those people identified.
I know that, like, it's currently through, like, if someone kind of picks up that a student or a family is going through something, then they're connected. Is there any communication to students to know that things exist to help them if they happen to go through this? Like, is there something in bathrooms? Is there something in emails? Is there anything currently in place that communicates access to help?
Probably not as much as we should be doing.
I'm thinking maybe we could just ask families if they come in to Agape and identify themselves as homeless, we could say, have you let the school know?
Sure.
You know, that, that wouldn't be any kind of a breach of confidentiality or anything and just encourage them to talk to someone at school counselor or somebody, so.
Yeah, some kind of partnership might have to be.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I know that A-plus can be connected in a lot of ways to attendance. Is that something that is impacting?
Yeah, and by and large, attendance and algebra one proficiency seem to be our two biggest hurdles, just as a district in terms of A-plus eligibility. But yet, they have to have a cumulative 95% attendance rate.
Hi.
Good. Hi, Mark.
But there is a protest part on that there too that
For sure.
I could see during a protest in a situation where this child has circumstances beyond their control, that someone could foresee if they met the other criteria, that that might not be the criteria that keeps them out if they, if they knew about that.
Right, yeah, committees get put together and they can have a hearing and
Yeah, right.
determinative. We had some of those during COVID especially.
Sure.
Thank you for that.
All right, so this is our normal monthly financial report here. So, we've got revenues. They're slightly higher this year than they were last year, nothing to be concerned about or anything, looks to be okay. Expenses are also right in line where they were last year. Fund balances are also up compared to last year, which is kind of surprising. I kind of thought we would be below where we were last year at this point. So, that was kind of a pleasant surprise. So, this is kind of our chart that we have every month. The blue line was two years ago when things were bleak, then last year when things weren't as bleak. And then, as you can see, last year, this time of year, we received our COVID funds, shot up our, our line there, our funds. And then this year's kind of stayed flat, so we didn't get the COVID money like we did last year. That's why you kind of see the differences between those lines. Now, what I'd expect the trend to be from here on out for the rest of the year, to be very close to what we had last year, kind of that steady decline as we spend down our funds. But we should end the year a little higher than we did last year, which is positive. Here's the numbers, revenue, local revenue is up pretty well this year compared to last year. There's a couple of reasons for that. Taxes are, we receive more tax money. We're seeing much, much better interest rates on our surplus funds by the extra money we have in the bank, we're actually making money. Helps, when you have money, it makes it easier to make money. So, so the money at the bank is doing better for us. And then also, we're seeing local funds come in for lunches that we didn't have prior. County money is about the same, state money is up, that's due to transportation, they're fully funding transportation this year, so that's, that's the main reason there. We're seeing a lot less federal money and that is because we did not receive the COVID money that we received last year. And so, that's kind of where the numbers are. We're receiving about $500,000 less than we did last year total. So, the expenses, salaries are up slightly, $300,000 or so because we did give raises, so that's expected. Benefits, again, that's going to be retirement, it's going to be up a little bit. Purchase services, that's our food service facility, that's why there's a difference there. And supplies are pretty much the same. And so, we're spending a little bit more this year than we did last year, but mainly that's the food service facility bumping that up. And then our capital projects fund, we have 1.5 million in the bank right now. That's finances.
Any questions? Okay. And I think we are ready for the consent agenda then. Would someone like to make a motion?
I will. I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sarah. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there anything there we need to discuss? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Consent agenda is approved. And then the next thing, bold business, we've got policies.
Yeah, no changes from last month, same, same as last month.
So, is there any discussion about any of these before we take action? Anybody have a question?
Can you just briefly touch on what they are?
Sure, yeah, the MSBA recommendations are for, they're just forms for virtual course vocab, and all of it is pretty bland, if you will. JGR is our student discipline policies, you know, which we had our committee, like we talked about last time, and so, this will update our student discipline policies. Probably the big change there would allow hats and hoods at the middle school, be consistent with what we're doing currently in the high school.
I'll make a motion to approve the policies as presented.
Thank you, Rich.
I'll second.
Thank you, Deanna. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the policies as presented. Is there any further discussion or any other questions?
I'd like to just state that I reached out to the principal of Blackcock and got her thoughts on things, because I know that for our generation and older, like hats and hoods were a, like, respect thing.
Mm-hmm.
But like you were mentioning and we mentioned at lots of meetings, that it's more of a disciplinary issue and not having to kind of get onto the same kids over and over again. So, she agreed with the approval of that one.
Kind of a pick-your-battles sort of thing.
Yeah.
Right. So, yes, I, I think of the respect thing too, but I, I get it too, so. Okay, anything else? If not, all those in favor of approving the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And on to new business, and first thing is STAR Assessment Contract.
Yes, just wanted to bring this to your attention. This is a requirement from the state to have a K through three reading assessment. So, this would be, it has to be off the approved list from the state. And so, the list came out and there is funding that comes back for this for one year for K through three, so we will apply, of course, for the reimbursement of that. But after that, I don't know if the funding will be available, so. But we will go ahead and purchase this K through eight, like Dr. Ross talked about earlier in his presentation, where we have two different systems between elementary and middle school. It's hard to do any real linear study on how, how things are going. So, we are asking to purchase K through eight of this.
And that cost is a yearly cost?
Yes, that will be an annual cost. And so, we'll have reimbursement through K through three, but we will not have reimbursement. And then after that, I do not believe that reimbursement is going to be there, the district will just be required to fund this.
In spite of the fact that they're requiring us to choose one from their list?
Correct.
Kind of like when they're like, have location rooms.
Right. They're not on a big one. Unfunded mainly, it's our favorite.
I know we, I know we have to do this, but I also would like to talk about
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
maybe about this looks. And so, like, I know that our teachers already know some of, like, the DRA or they know those things. And so, is there going to be a large learning curve? Because I also know some of our elementary have been doing letters training, which I believe is connected to reading. And so, I think, just in general, this is more like, obviously, I, this is a state level decision, but I'd still like to talk through, like, how much is this going to impact, like, adding more
Right.
to our teachers?
So, our goal is to take something off their plate. Anytime we have to add something, unless there's a state requirement, we have to do it, so what can we take off their plate? So, we'll work, the assessment committee has been, we have assessment committee, which is made up of teachers and they, they kind of work through all of that. And so, what will probably most likely happen would be that the current assessments that we're giving, we will stop giving those. Now, teachers could still also give those if they really like giving them, they can continue to give those if they like, but they wouldn't be required to give them like they are now. And so, this would be the new required assessment that teachers would have to give. You know, it would be beginning of the year to end of the year at minimum and then will probably be a midway test too, just to see how we're doing. So, three times a year would be the kind of requirement that we'd have to do on that. And so, what the assessment committee did is they reviewed all the options and this is the one that they've selected.
Okay.
Right. And so, then, our hope is that we can then have some reporting data too, that we can report out to everyone how, how kids are progressing as well.
I do really like that it'll be consistent through eighth grade now, because that's, that's an improvement, I think.
Right.
Which should help with comparing.
I guess I would say I like the fact of approaching it that way of if we're going to put something additional on, on their plate to remove something, I guess. So, I really, I like your net, from a budget perspective, is there a cost, I guess, effect, right? If we're removing that, were we paying for DRA that we're not going to pay for anymore?
No, yeah, it must be an additional cost, must be additional.
So, the full $17,000 would be additional?
It would definitely be additional, but we will receive probably about half of that back, so
This year?
Next year, so it'll be, you know, eight, nine thousand dollars. And then, but after that, the funding, we don't know, so it'll continue to be a cost. And then, if you remember back, one of our budget cuts we made, you know, back when things were bad, was we cut our evaluate program. And so, the, the expense of that is actually was more expensive than this program.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I thought. It was a lot more than this.
So, I do believe the state has tried to negotiate the best price for districts with the company, which, of course, we're thankful for that, you know, but we're still, we're required to pay for it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, I mean, everything that we do as far as our CSEPs and anything that we do here, this is a big part of any goals that we've set for our school district, so therefore it has to be at the top of our importance list as well.
Absolutely, right. Everything, I mean, reading levels is something we're always working on, as they're driving force, particularly at elementary schools. That's what we talk about, spend a lot of our time, that's where we put our Title I funds to focus on, on reading. Reading, reading at the elementary level really is our, our key focus on just about everything we do. So, this will definitely assist with that, for sure.
Has to.
And it sounds like, I'm grateful that you said that the assessment committee is the ones who will suggest this, because I, I would want to make sure that we're picking an assessment that aligns with the curriculum that we currently have and the, because it, it would just really stick to how curriculum that they're teaching and then have to figure out how to, like, make sure that they're covering things that are going on this assessment.
And that was looked at and they felt like, out of the choices that we had, this was the best one
Great.
for that piece.
It's just, I like the fact that, you know, anytime in education, we're always comparing apples to oranges, at least this sounds like that we're going to be comparing apples to apples through the years and trying to be on the same page as the
Sure, and with more and more people going to this, I don't know how many districts are going to select this, but I imagine quite a few, if we think it's good, other people will also think it's good, so we can maybe have some collaborative conversation with them throughout the year, how our kids are progressing. So, there are positives to this, I mean, there are definitely positives.
Is it, they're on the Chromebooks?
Well, K through eight, I don't know if kindergarten is, just because
Yeah.
first day kindergarten, I don't know if they're going to be able to access that.
100%.
But I believe the upgrades definitely, they are, they're all online, but I'm not sure about kindergarten.
Sure, I'm, I'm going to have a kindergarten, so I'm like, how's it going to do this?
You mean kindergarten?
I want to do well on it.
Using, using, you say?
Well, the first
Oh, my preschool kid can.
Just getting them logged on, I mean, trying to get to, so, I like the numbers machine had back in the day. But, you know, trying to get 20, 25, the first week at school might take a minute, just get it organized.
I don't know.
But, but maybe so. But I'm just not 100% sure on kindergarten, but I believe the rest are all online.
I don't think we have a motion on the floor yet about this, right?
Not yet.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to approve the contract as presented. Is there any further discussion or any other questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now, we've got another contract for SpedTrak.
Yep, SpedTrak, so just as a board's aware of this one as well, since we're switching to, from Cisk twelve to Infinite Campus, there's just some hiccups and things we're finding that aren't great. Cisk twelve is going away, so we have to do something. So, we've switched to Infinite Campus and we've looked at their special education module and it just doesn't seem to be up to par of what we need it to be. And all, all the districts in the state that are currently using Infinite Campus, none of them have or using Infinite Campus Special Education Module of concerns of compliance and that sort of thing. And we've had a chance to look at that, I was really, I know our special education department has really wanted this a lot sooner than now, but I've really been like, I don't want to spend the money. And so, been a little bit of, you know, debate there. So, I've asked them to look at it once it gets implemented, now we've had a chance to look at it and realize it's, it's just not going to work. And so, we're going to, we've asked to go ahead and get SpedTrak for one year. I didn't want to lock into a long-term contract, just because we might find out as we get into Infinite Campus that we can actually make it work and save the $11,000 now. But if we go to a long-term contract, of course, it'd be a cheaper deal. But, you know, I just felt like the best thing to do is just do one year, let's get in, see Infinite Campus in lifetime, maybe something will change. But anyway, the recommendation is go ahead and have this SpedTrak contract for one year to manage our special education paperwork.
I've, I've heard from a teacher just how much they, her, her colleagues really wanted this. And so, I am grateful that we're having the opportunity to be able to do this, especially since it impacts our entire district. I mean, I know 11,000 is 11,000, but it's going to impact, it has such a wide spread. And I, I'm grateful that we're, I know you've had reason to be patient, but I, I think it's good.
Yeah, they, they got me on this. I'm really, I really don't like spending money because I've been there, we're like, hey, but this is one where just, okay, we're going to have to spend a little money to
So, this is going to come out of the special ed budget,
Right.
but we still need to approve it?
Yeah, we'll need to approve the contract.
Okay, okay.
So, if this goes away, what happens to the data inside this?
It would transfer. We would have a backup system, same thing we do with Cisk twelve now, so there'd be a way that we would store it on our own system. There, there's some processes that we basically would download from them and upload in our servers here and keep forever, a server here.
Okay.
That's how it would work. Yeah. You know, we've had, we've kind of talked a lot about that for Cisk twelve, because after a long time, like, what do we do with, where's the data go? Like, we still need all this and have to keep it for a certain number of years. And so, you know, that's, that's, we've been navigating that, so that's how that works is they basically give you a file and you can upload it in your servers or they can host on our server for you, but we, you know, that's
Like, for me, wanting to retain our special ed teachers and, like, knowing that there's a way that we can make their paperwork, you know, making sure that we follow compliance, everything, like, for that price, I, it's, it's still worth it to me.
I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve this SpedTrak contract as presented.
Thank you, Sarah.
I second.
Thank you, Carolyn. Motion's been made and seconded to approve this SpedTrak contract. Is there any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. High-needs parent professional pay scale.
Right. Okay. So this is, I can't say it's my best idea I've ever had, but it is an idea. And so, but I do think it is, it is positive, overall positive for our students or our school district. When we were looking at last month, we approved the parent salaries pay scale. And so I was kind of working on that, working on the budget, looking at our high needs fund. A kind of light bulb went on that we aren't very far away from the high needs fund based off our parent's pay scale. And so if we can increase that for our one-to-one parents, we can be reimbursed from the high needs fund the, about the same amount that it would take to increase it and cover the cost. And the way that works is for the high needs fund, for our school district, it's, we're reimbursed for any expense for a special education student that's three times higher than the expenses of a traditionally educated student. So that number for us is thirty-four thousand seven hundred fifty-one. And so typically, high needs is used when we have an outside placement, like for a center for autism, it might cost us eighty thousand dollars. The district pays the first thirty-four thousand seven hundred fifty-one, and then, then we're reimbursed the remainder amount the next, next fiscal year. And so that's called the high needs fund. And so I reached out to the state and I said, can I use this for staff? You know, they're like, you know, yeah, sure, if it's in the IMP, we don't manage your pay scales. That's up to the local decisions. Because I said, you know, we're struggling to hire parent professionals. Like, this is something, we're still in kind of a crisis mode, if you will, of finding them. We're about twenty percent unfilled now. So knowing that pay helps draw people in, I was like, well, if I, if I increase my parent pay, and I looked at the caseloads of all the teachers, the teachers had about nine, ten kids on a caseload. And so if the parent pay, the parent, the one-to-one parent, or the high needs parent reaches that threshold of the thirty-four thousand, we can be reimbursed a portion of the teacher salary. So let's say one tenth of the teacher's salary. So the average parent, that was a way, the difference was about sixty-eight hundred dollars from the parent pay to the high needs fund. The average amount about that we can get back from the teacher reimbursement was about sixty-five hundred dollars. So it's not exactly perfectly, but it's pretty close. And to me, I thought, boy, that's, that might be a way that we can do this. Now, problems with this. One, negotiations are over. You know, and so that's a problem. Other problems is this can't be done for every parent. The high needs fund reimburse is tied to each student. So, so the student itself has to be receiving those minutes that time. So we met as a superintendent's advisory team to kind of talk about this on Tuesday. And we had a good idea that came out of this to address the first issue, negotiations are over, what should we do? And so we had a virtual meeting yesterday with anybody on the big negotiating team that could join us. We were able to have conversation about this issue. And I was thankful that, that our staff was very student-centered, one of the best for kids, knowing that this may not be the same for each parent person. There might be some differences there. But they wanted to support our kids and do what we could to get, get staff hired. So there was consensus from the group there, and the majority of people were, were for it. And so that was kind of how we tried to address step one, being out, being out of order, was having a process of outside negotiations. How can we, if we have opportunities? And so we've been down this road before. For example, career ladder for teachers. We had, you know, the parent stipend, we did let's last year to try to get things done. So we're kind of working through opportunities as they come outside of negotiations, what we could do. So I think the process there is good. But, but what I do think is, we're such a shortage for teachers. We need, or for, I'm sorry, for parent professionals, we, we need to do something to address that need to get this for most vulnerable kids. So what we're identifying as a high needs parent is someone who works in the, in the, with one student for fifteen hundred minutes or more per week. That would be consistent in the job description that we would create, and that'd be consistent across the district. So if you, so if you work with one student for fifteen hundred minutes, you have access to that parent for fifteen hundred minutes, that person could be the high needs parent. And we would then post those jobs, we would then interview for the jobs and hire for those positions. That's how that would work. Now, downsides, the student wouldn't move, that position would no longer be available. And so that person would might have to go back to a standard parent position, and there'd be a decrease in pay. And then other sides, as if a student moves in, we might need to increase our budget for that and have another parent there. But then we would still get the money back. So, and, and the reason I got to the twenty-two dollars an hour is because that is right at the thirty-four thousand dollar. And we include insurance and retirement. So the full pay packaged at thirty-four thousand.
It could also be adjusted, and potentially a student gets to the point of more independence, or is that?
Right. So the IUP team, and so for those that don't, aren't familiar how IUP teams work, annually, at minimum, they will get together and review the student's progress. And the IUP team is made up of parents, teachers, school administration. Parents can have advocates if they want. Sometimes they bring attorneys. You know, so it can really be a big group, you know, and they're, they're really trying to determine what is best for the child. And so that is how that's determined. So this isn't like, we're just going to pick this person and this person because we need these people to be on these pay scales. It's going to be tied to the IUP, and that's the way the high needs fund works as well. And so when I've talked to the guy at the state, he said, you know, if you picked up, if the IPT team says you need a one-on-one teacher for that kid, you know, the district would pay the first, you know, thirty-four thousand, and then we'd reimburse the rest. Really, it just depends on what the IUP team does. And so the high needs fund is there to help support that. And so if we, if we increase our pay to, for our professionals, this might help us actually have the support our special education students need.
How many of these do you think we will need the next year?
Well, right now, we were talking this morning, we have about ten vacancies in parent professionals right now. We think, maybe three, four, that this, this might directly impact filling those positions. I was more hopeful that we'd fill all of them. Like, hey, this is taking care of all of our problems. But I'm just not confident that, because when we started going through all the IUPs, it didn't, it didn't, the numbers weren't there. And so we're not asking people to rewrite IUPs or anything like that, but then we want people to just do what's best for the kid. And we want to provide the support that those students need.
But you think there are three or four openings right now?
That could be directly filled, right.
Directly filled.
Yeah, the positions that, the, the classrooms that will be the most impacted will be our essential skills classrooms. So that's at Dana Moon, middle school to high school, have essential skills programs. And that, those are the students right now where we really struggle to get parents, that this will benefit the most. And, and so we're talking essential skills, you know, we're talking kids that need help with toileting, you know, some of our, you know, low-functioning students that, that need this support. And so that, that's who we're trying to, to help with parent professional shortage. Dr. Ross, I hit the staffing about right now. We've done a lot of work on that.
Yeah, no, you're, you're right on it.
Yeah.
I was trying to find it in the proposal, but I can't find it. So just rough guess on total, total cost.
Okay, total cost, what I think might be, and I'm, I'm just using a high number here. I don't, don't think it'll be this high. But it'll probably be two hundred thousand initially, the first year, then we would be reimbursed that back. It'll probably be closer to like one fifty, maybe a hundred. You know, it just kind of depends where it is, but.
And this would be starting in twenty-three, twenty-four?
Next school year, yes. Yeah, next school year. And our fund balances, we're in a good spot fund balance-wise. So for us to start for one year, you have to kind of put the money out. And then we get the money back in November, December. So we get it back fairly quickly, but it is a different budget cycle. So this budget might show a deficit budget a little bit, but we're.
Can you talk through, so I'm a parent, I've applied for the high needs, I get the high needs, I'm with that student, and then that student moves? Or the IUP changes? What happens to this person?
Right. So what we would have to do at that point is either A, try to transfer them to another high needs open position, if there is one, so they can maintain their pay. Or they would go back to a standard parent position, which would be a decrease in pay. So the position would be eliminated. And that does happen from time to time with our hourly staff, when there's, you know, the position is no longer needed, that position goes away. And we do try to find places for people to go, but, you know, sometimes it's just, it's just unfortunate for them.
So the best case scenario is for us to find another position for them that's at the same pay?
Right.
The other one is that, like, they probably would have job security. There's probably some.
Yeah.
Parent, so I like, I, I do want our, our parent professionals to have job security. It is a part of this that they wouldn't necessarily have financial security, since there's not a hundred percent confidence of what's going to happen. Because, I mean, the kid could also have health conditions that keeps them in the hospital for a while. Or like, there's, there's things outside of, of our control.
If we locate the kids in the hospital for a little bit, we probably wouldn't, we'd probably let that person stay at that pay scale until definitively we know the person's not coming back, you know? So we'll, we'll try to work as best we can with our staff. At the same time, we don't want to have expenses that we can't get reimbursed for. You know, that's, that's the only reason that this works.
I assume that we would first open these positions to people who are already with us, like, they would have the option to.
Yeah, everyone will apply. And I, I would imagine, I can't, you know, we'll go through and hire the best candidate for the job, like we always do. But I would imagine the best candidate will probably be the person that's already knows the kid and working with them.
Sure.
So, so most likely, our parent, our parents that are currently working with the students will get those jobs. But we will follow our normal hiring processes of posting and interviewing, finding the best candidate.
And they will know upfront that the situation that could happen.
Yes. So we've got an FAQ for our current people, we've kind of put out, we will email that out tonight if this is approved and let them know this. It's kind of how things will work. But a lot of times, our essential skills, they typically don't move a lot. You know, they do move some, but, you know, they get their doctors lined up, they get their school set up, they kind of get in their situation.
Their support system.
Support system in place. And so it's, it's not as, you know, transitory as some other positions. But that is a possibility, yes, that, that is something that's happening.
So I think, I mean, from, from my perspective, I guess, maybe I'm just looking for more clarity too. We're talking about three or four positions that we would, that we would pay more.
No, it'd be, no, we'd pay about seventeen more. So, but our open positions are made.
Of the open, right?
Yes.
So about half our parents would, would concede an increase in pay, which would definitely help with retention, for sure. And then another, the other half would not.
Okay. That, that answers my question then, because my concern was if it's only three or four, we're really increasing retention and/or recruitment.
Right, right.
If it's only three or four that we probably already have on staff.
Right. So I'm just talking about the ones we might pick up. We would, out of the ten vacancies, we might only get three or four of those vacancies filled under this. But it would definitely help, help keep some of the people we have.
Yeah. And I think that's, that was my biggest concern, was not, not with this. I mean, absolutely love the creativity of figuring out this issue because it's been an issue that we've talked about every month of, oh my gosh, four or five more parents left last month, right? I mean, it's been continuous all year, so.
So we, last November, did the, were, there's this many vacancies, we divided it up, and we gave out stipends. So are these now two separate columns?
Yes.
So if we had vacancies of not high needs parent professionals, then would those people be the ones that get the stipend?
Correct. So it'll work as two separate jobs.
Okay.
So we'll have the high needs parent column, and we'll have the traditional parent column, and so that we will look at those on vacancies. So if there's vacancies in the traditional parent position, as we agreed to in our agreement, that in November, that's when they will start receiving additional stipends for shortages in those areas. So most likely, the group that's going to get the stipend would be the ones with the lower pay.
Yes.
That might help with pay throughout the year. Most likely.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve this high needs parent professional pay scale as submitted tonight by, and thank Dr., thank Dr. Ross for all the work they've done and coming up with a creative idea and attacking a situation that's been a high need for us as a district. So I'll make a motion to pass this as submitted.
Okay. We have a motion?
I'll second.
Second. Thank you, Deanna. Motion is second to approve the one-to-one parent professional pay increase for this coming school year. Any other discussion? Ginger, you've been awfully quiet.
I'm loving just sitting over here.
No pressure.
I've also been involved in the staff team discussion, so I kind of had my questions already answered.
Okay. I know that the parents who do these jobs are really important because they have so many, they meet so many needs that some people wouldn't be willing to meet. And I know that it helps the teacher, all the teachers, and everybody in the building when those jobs are filled. It makes a difference. So I think it's important to try to do what we can to compensate those people and try to fill as many positions as we can. Like it's, like you said, it's been a problem for a while now, so it's not getting better.
It will continue to be a problem.
Yeah. Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. High school roof bids.
Yes. So we have good news here, is that, you know, estimated costs are coming down on building costs. So we were, I was happy to see this. This is about thirty-eight thousand square feet of roof that's going to be done under three hundred thousand. So that's, that's better than I thought it was going to be. I thought it was going to be closer to four hundred or more. So this is original roof at, uh, Morton High School, and that kind of layout there. It's section three, seven, and eight, and the low bid was shake, shake, shaved roofing at two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. And they've done some work with us before, good company, no issues with them, so we recommend a little bit.
This is just something that's been needed to be done for quite some ti- I know we have Warrior Ridge roof issues as well. And so is this a bigger need than?
Yeah, well, it's one we can afford to, and it needs to be done. It's a ri- it's original roof. And right now, when the wind blows, it rips the, it's a flat, flat roof, so it's just disintegrated down to basically paper. And so we have great maintenance guys, and they do everything they can to patch it, but it, it's just time to. You know, as a building agent, it's just one of the needs.
I appreciate that.
When would the work be done? This would start in December, I believe is when they can get going. So we'll continue to work on it in the spring, but just, that's as soon as they, I'm sure if they can get to it sooner, they will, but that's just what they've told us.
I appreciate that we have three bids. I know sometimes it's hard to get bids so that we have something to compare. But it's great to have those three bids and know that this is the lowest one, so.
And they're all very competitive bids, so.
Yeah. I would entertain a motion. This is going to come out of the.
Yes, this would be our maintenance budget, or basically our capital projects budget. So we've got about one point five million in there. We'll start spending that down over concrete roofing.
I make a motion to approve the high school roofing bid as presented.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to approve the high school roofing bid as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. And we are down to policy first reads, I believe.
Yep, just so everyone's aware of these. So there's quite, quite a few in here. But let me just go with the MSBA recommendations. Most of those are just straightforward to match new state laws. So no real changes there. One that is kind of notable, that, you know, is really kind of surprising. I'm kind of surprised I missed the law change on this last legislative session. There's a new state law that families who have eighty acres of land, if you had eighty acres of land, you could live in another district but still attend the district. And we've had that happen in the past year where, where a student, they lived in Montgomery County, had eighty acres here, but didn't live here, but they wanted to come here. And they could come to school because they had eighty acres here in our school district. And that law has changed. That is no longer an option for families. And so the, the replacement of that is if a parent who's paid a minimum of two thousand dollars in school taxes, then they can send their children to, or county R three. So let's say you live in Montgomery, and you want to come here, but you have rental property, I guess, or something like that, and you could, so you could send your child here by new state law. So that was kind of an interesting change that caught my attention.
I guess they could have a business here too.
No.
No, not?
I don't think, I think according to what I read, it can't be a business.
Oh, really? Okay.
I.
Yeah, I'm not.
I just thought they would be paying taxes.
Yeah, me too. And so we, we'll cross that bridge when we get that, if we get that question, for sure.
We don't currently have anyone who's, you've been utilizing the eighty acre.
Not, not today. Not today.
It, it says, please note that business property does not qualify for this exception.
That's interesting. They're still paying the school taxes, though.
Please note.
Right.
Thank you, Sarah. I missed that.
Duly noted.
She reads all the white words, thank goodness.
Our first one of these we get, we will be calling our attorney to make sure we're checking this correctly. Like, this is new territory.
Are they on their own participation then?
I would assume so. I would assume so. Again, all new territory, so.
Yeah, it's something to consider, I guess.
Something to consider. But that's just in line with new state law. Okay, some things that MSBA sent to us that I have modified is the public participation in board meetings. So what I did on here is kind of made it look more like what our time is. So let me pull up policy up here. Mine's loading. pull up policy up here, mine's loading. One of the main things that it talked about was limiting time. Now, the changes that I made are in blue, so, like, for example, one of the things here says at least five business days, that's, that's consistent with statutes, so that gives people a little bit more time, and just, I think that was just amiss by them. So, like, we've, they said that the board should, you know, allow residents five minutes to speak once they're on the agenda, so we can, we can debate that if you'd like, but my recommendation is to do what we're doing now, and somebody wants to get on the agenda, just give them time to do that. And so, all the other things I, I took off in blue were the time, so, I think that was all on that one. So, and then, any questions on that?
As, as someone who's utilized that policy before, I definitely appreciate you taking off the time limit, yeah, because it's the only time that you get to have actual discussion with the board, and it fosters a sense of community and discussion. When you're just seated or make comments to the board, it kind of doesn't feel like you're having that communication level, so definitely appreciate you taking that off.
Right, and so that would be the items on the agenda, so then you get to the public comment side. I did take off a thing that says that it'd be limited to items from posted agenda, often we have people come talk to us and we'll talk about other things, so just, I thought that'd be okay. I'm just trying to make it more kind of what we've been doing, as opposed to just here's the blanket policy. So, okay. The other one that we changed was policy KC, community engagement. This does require, the, the state statutes there, if you want to look at it, this does require, let's see here, community feedback, and what the attorneys have said is, the bare minimum is you have to just have to have a first read and a second read, so the first read, you notify, like we're doing today in a meeting, that this is happening, and people come and do it. I thought we'd take it a little step further, so I emailed our parents and just got a survey from them, what they felt, you know, if they, how they felt the process was communicating with the board, and the, out of the ones that responded, about ninety percent of them, ninety-one percent said that our current process of public hearings, written correspondence, get public comments, or getting on the agenda were sufficient. So, I'm not seeing a need to make any change in the policy. We did get some feedback, and that's on here, some things they'd like to see, so we can, if you want to add that to the policy, we can, but I don't know anything that jumped out to me that said, oh, this needs to be in the policy. And again, same thing here, I did take out some of the things that MSBA recommended. What MSBA did is, it says right here in their first paragraph, is they just reached out to Illinois, and it says Illinois has something similar to law, and they just put Illinois's policy over here, and it's talking with, you know, the attorneys that kind of gave some other presentations of what you have to have and what you can take out, and that sort of thing. The part about community engagement plan, you know, you don't, we don't have to have that in the policy. Now, do we want to create plans to do that? Sure, but making a plan and having a policy and updating it every year might, will get lost, like, we'll, we'll, I know somewhere along the line, we'll forget to do it, be out of policy, that'll be a problem. So, instead of having that policy, we would just take that out, still just meet the, meet the communication things that they had, but we'd go whatever direction the board wants to go, but that would be my recommendation on, on those. So, then?
Have a whole list.
Yeah, there's a bunch, there's a bunch. Well, they're not just straightforward, a lot of them, like, oh, new state laws, here's a bunch of policy changes, make new state laws. The other ones, we, we had negotiations, and so we needed updates of our policies to match what we agreed to in negotiations.
So, I did have a question on one, and this actually isn't a change on the GCBA policy. I forget which page it's on.
Four.
Yeah, page four, thank you. I was reading through it, and I came to this part that's about certified teacher employment incentives.
Get to that, right, yep.
And it talks about putting, like, a, a position that's hard to fill is kind of how I read it, that we could put someone, give them extra steps or something, is that something we've used?
Not too much, because it has to go on your salary schedule, so, we're not allowed to give bonuses to teachers, it's, it's not allowable. But, what we are allowed to do is put on salary schedule that we're going to pay people differently, and however the board determines as a high-needs physician. I'll just pick one, my special education teachers.
Okay.
So, let's say we're going to say special education teachers, because I know that there is a district north of us that's doing that, doing that for their special education teachers. If we put it on our salary schedule, then we can say special education teachers can get it, you know, just pick a number, you know, five thousand dollars, just picking a number, not saying special education, just, please open up a paper, John, that, this is just an example, I want to be very, very clear, very, very clear about that. But, so, let's say, we put our salary schedule, the special education teachers could get five thousand dollars more, then, then that would be legal, if it's on your salary schedule, is how that has to go.
But, it was high school teachers, or?
High school teachers, or math, or, but the board has to identify, if I remember right, what those high-needs areas are.
What the high-needs areas are.
Right.
But, it's not something we've used, it's not something we had in practice.
The only thing I can think of is maybe, maybe ten years ago, if I'm going in the wayback machine, project leadway, people got a little extra, if I remember right, maybe a little stipend of some sort.
Okay, so, but it's not something we've been doing on a regular basis or anything like that, because we would have to approve.
Correct.
That.
Yeah, this is not, so that's come out of our negotiations, it's not something we've brought either, and next year, we might need to consider that, if we continue to struggle to find, find, you know, like, special education teachers, the first thing that comes to mind is an area of, of people, a lot of people left this year, and kind of struggling to find people, so.
Well, it just kind of jumped out at me, and I didn't think I could, I couldn't come up with an example of anything that we've done that with.
No.
So, I didn't think we were utilizing it, but I just wanted to ask about it, because it, I didn't realize it was.
Right, so, so there is a, there is kind of a gray area here, because I've had this come up, so I called MSBA attorneys, I'm like, hey, walk me through this, because I know it's illegal to give bonuses, you can't do that. They're like, yep, can't give bonuses, that's illegal. I'm like, well, how can I do this? How can I pay, let's say, these, this group of teachers more than the other groups of teachers? They're like, well, that's part of your pay scale, and that's not illegal if it's on your pay scale. It's like, well, okay.
Okay.
I guess that's the way it is.
We just call things other things, like career ladder.
Right, right.
We'll just call it other things.
Sure. But, yeah, but if the board would like to identify a high-needs area, we can put that on, on our salary schedule, and then that would be a legal way to pay different groups of teachers different amounts of money.
Just seems like opening a can of worms to me.
Yeah, that's kind of my position as well.
Just makes it legal.
Right.
I know, they get a good idea, but, I'm a little, okay. Does anybody have any other questions about those, we're not taking any action tonight because it's first reads, so we'll vote on them next time, but, anything else? If not, we will move along to miscellaneous, and the first thing is celebrations. I got to go to, I, I got to present the Belcher Scholarship for, on behalf of the board at the Senior Recognition Night or Senior Awards Night, and it's just always really fun for me and exciting for me to see how much support there is in our community for our seniors, because the amounts that they got in scholarships, just from the local, and then, then they, they read off all the amounts they've been offered from the colleges and stuff, and it's really amazing, but just our local community is, is such a great support for our kids who are going to go on, and it, and it wasn't all four-year colleges by any means, some of it was for tech schools and things like that, and I think it's really great that we have so much support, so that was a big joy for me to be there for that.
Yeah, speaking of community support, the red and white dinner happened a couple weeks ago, and the community showed up and really was generous in supporting our teachers with the teacher grants and our students who did the scholarships, and they were handing out two thousand dollars of these to these kids, so that's wonderful.
And there was, there was a crew who got those, so that was awesome.
I wanted to point out that Elena Bates, she competed at the spelling bee, and she made, was one of the last eight spellers, and I just thought that that was awesome, that she went that far and represented our school.
And I was going to say something same way about the senior night, I just wanted to give a shout out to our senior counselor, Tanya McDaniel, and all the work that she puts in with the ladies in her office, they do a phenomenal job, and I was not there this evening, I loved that night, and I was not there, it was our anniversary, but I just wanted to give her a shout out, and I know tonight that we celebrated a lot of our students, and sometimes what gets lost in that picture are the people that put so much time and effort into those kids, so I want to give a shout out to Diana Miderhoff, Dan Burkemberg, with the FFA organization, because I know they went to the state convention, and all the videos and all the pictures that they shared, it was absolutely phenomenal, and they do a great job with their programs there, then Ms. Tessa Freeman, Ms. Sammy Rutledge with the band, and I know Tessa was here tonight, but I tell you, they are rocking it, and the band is even getting bigger and bigger and louder and louder and better and better, so, just a shout out to all those folks and all they do for our kiddos.
Anybody else? Okay, our work session this month is going to be a little different, because we're going to tour the school in Wentzville, right? So, if we're going to meet here, what time should we meet? If we're going?
Probably four-thirty, if you want to be here, or if you wanted to just go straight there, that's fine too, if you're coming that direction anyway from work or whatever, that would be, be fine, just to meet there.
So, that'll be May twenty-fifth, and it's open if anybody wants to join us, right? We talked about that earlier, so. Tour of Wabash Elementary School in Wentzville on May twenty-fifth at five o'clock, and we need to set our next regular meeting.
I make a motion to set the next regular board meeting to June eighth, twenty-twenty-three at seven PM. My second.
Thank you, Carolyn, for the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, just be quiet because you got to meet them then. It always seems silly to vote on that, I'm sorry. And then, set the next closed session.
I'm going to set the next closed session to immediately proceed the June eighth, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting.
Thank you, Jeff.
My second.
Thank you, Sarah. Motion's been made and seconded to set the next closed session to immediately proceed the June eighth regular board meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I know, you love it, I was waiting. And Carolyn, seconded, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.[1791.83]